Hi Kurt.
Hello.
Thank you for being here. Have you reviewed the general plan?
Yeah.
Section on water?
A while ago.
Yeah, okay. And actually before we go there, can we just wanted to clear up one factual issue which came up early on. That is, what is the percentage of water hiatus? That the percentage of water that comes from well, so percentage of our potable water that comes from well sources and the percentage that comes from surface water?
Okay, so in general terms, nice round numbers.
Uh huh, yeah.
Eighty percent is well and twenty percent is from the surface water plant. So, yeah.
And the twenty percent is mainly in the Lihue area because
Yes.
The surface water plant is here in Lihue?
Here, yes.
Okay. What is your total number of users?
We're about at twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand.
So customers.
Thousand, okay. And I know that Hope was showing figures that said fifteen thousand came from Lihue.
That I gotta go look at the distribution.
But even the surface water is not for all of Lihue, is it?
No, we-
It's just for portions of Lihue?
Um, yes. And we also move that water towards Waileua and-
Waileua, so some, it provides some Waileua water and some Lihue.
Yeah, and then I think she had a number of three million gallons listed.
Yes.
That's the capacity of the plant. We currently use about two, two point two million.
In follow-up on that, when do you anticipate to hit capacity once?
Hit capacity, oh-
Yeah, so I mean if the capacity is the, then when do you anticipate?
Oh, not to show, that would depend on developments occurring.
Because Kohialoa, they're not looking at additional source for just Kohialoa building out, so.
Kohialoa is the development in Hanamauulu-
The triangle.
That's breaking ground right now.
Yeah.
Their first increment.
Yeah.
And you're saying there's enough source for that development?
For, yeah.
Completely?
Yeah.
The transmission, there's not complete availability of transmission?
No, we have other issues and storage and stuff that they have to do, but in terms of just the source side, we're-
And I, I mean, I think we used part of the forty million dollars which we got after the hurricane to build the water source. We put it into building the water source. It was before your time.
Yeah.
But we did use that money.
One follow-up? Thank you, thanks for being here. So, three million gallons capacity or maximum, we're at two point two.
In that.
So the point eight left, how, how many more?
Houses. Uh, three fifty per gallon per day.
I'm sorry?
Say, single fam- seven fifty, seven hundred fifty gallons per day per household, single family home.
Okay, hang on. I mean, I'm decent in math, but not the-
Well, if you're calculating-
So point eight, that's eight hundred thousand.
How about thousand?
Oh yeah, there we go, pretty close, divided by seven fifty, about, yeah, thousand sixty-six homes before you reach capacity.
So, follow-up question to that, is that already designated for Grow Farm?
No, Grow Farm developed a master plan and they was required to do-
Maybe you can state your name.
My name is Eddie Doi. Grow Farm did a master plan and they are required to provide the source storage and transmission to develop their master plan.
Or build out their-
So it build out the lands here in Lihue from the hospital all along there and around Molokor, right?
Yeah.
The lands that they own, yes.
Right.
They own most of the land.
So they have a plan that's going to require more source, more storage.
And, and they're, they're not obligated to do any more affordable housing because their affordable housing requirement is supposed to be met by Kohialoa?
Um-
You don't know?
No, I mean-
Okay, well, we're gonna ask that question of housing and planning, but that's my understanding. So, if that's, I mean, this is the interface with affordable housing here. If Kohialoa is Grow Farm's affordable housing contribution-
Yeah, I mean-
You know, like, when is it gonna get done? Okay, so-
Can I just have a follow-up on that one too?
Yeah.
So in terms of how inter, like developers or like Grow Farms' plan and like our water plan twenty twenty, does that, is that integrated at all, or?
Our water plan twenty twenty does include some what we call expansion, but typically what it does is it looks at areas where we're coming up to, say, capacity limits, whether it's pipes or storage or wells. It also looks at the condition, so, you know, replacement, repair of the system. It doesn't look at whether, you know, we need to build two miles of twelve inch pipe to serve a proposed subdivision, you know, somewhere. It's essentially the existing system and fixing and beefing that up.
So in terms of the general plan, I mean, this, your twenty twenty plan doesn't go all the way to that, to that twenty thirty-five, I guess, right? So, have you folks been able or have any more input in terms of where, what that gap is that we need to be addressing?
Well, what we have in the budget now is to update our-
Plan?
Twenty twenty plan. And the question is, is it twenty forty or twenty thirty-five?
Very, very, very.
Yeah, so, um-
So it's nothing right now, but you anticipate that, does there need to be some verbiage, I guess, in my question that needs to state, state what it is we need to be, like we talked about the summit plan, so. That we need to pursue the completion of that plan in order to actually validate that needs within the twenty, the general plan?
Well, I mean, that and like was previously stated, it was talked about, oh, was the water use in development plan? That actually determines based on gross areas of land use and zoning and available water, you know, what-
And is everything up to date on the twenty, on our water plan? Are we, are we on track with everything that we said?
Water use in development plan?
Yeah.
We're drafting it now.
Oh.
So it's being written now.
I think you asked about the water twenty twenty.
Oh. Are we up to date in terms of the projects? Yes and no. We're behind, but we also added something close to a hundred projects to it also. So, I mean, it's one of those things, it's kind of a goal, you know, a guide on how we're gonna proceed.
I think he's on this, this one, and I, no, we kind of like-
You're still following up?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
No, I just, because of the water twenty twenty came up. The projects on water twenty, I guess I was informed, not recently, that some of the projects have canceled, one being the water tank, the storage where the safety-
Yes.
Why was that? Why was that project, that one's funded and ready to go, right?
Um, it's designed, yes, and-
But as far as the funding's available?
Yeah.
Why would that have been taken off?
Because when we looked at it again, we didn't have the source to fill that tank and the service area was relatively small. And I guess you can blame me because I asked the stupid question, it's been offline for several years. Nobody's complained, we haven't had service problems or, you know, fire flow problems. Do we need to build it right now? And the question, so, you know, it-
I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just curious as to-
No.
That project was in the plan.
So, I mean, we also, if, you know, when we look at projects, we start the design, you know, years ago and we follow through on the design and partway through, like in, up in Kalahaila, we had a fairly large tank there, I forget what the size was, but we downsized it considerably because of one water use in, so.
The, when, I mean, as far as the, the tank, when would you anticipate needing that storage?
Um, when and if we develop more source, Maoka of the tank.
And is that in the plan at all, or?
Um, I guess- It, it, no, it is, it is in the plan, but it'll probably require a surface water plant because it's tunnel water that was supposed to feed that tank and the tank, the tunnel was deemed by Department of Health that it was under the influence of surface water, which means we have to treat it, so.
Was, was there a tank there prior?
Yes.
And was that being used?
Um-
It was being used.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, now, I guess that's where I'm a little concerned. How much was the, how much did we spend on that project in planning, design?
I don't know offhand.
It was significant.
Yeah, kaput, a thousand maybe, I don't know.
And that it would be cheaper to build that tank today than it would in the future, right?
Yeah.
And if we were using that tank, wouldn't we be able to use a new tank?
Yeah, potentially, but what happens is it becomes an operational problem with the disinfection because now you have this wide spot, I mean, really wide spot in the line. So if the water sits there, we lose disinfection and either we have to add more disinfection and then let it dissipate and then go to the system, or we're gonna have to redisinfact. So it becomes kind of an operational headache.
When do you think that, that need will arise where the tank will have to be, or a tank will have to be built?
Um, right off the top of my head, I don't know.
Five years, ten years?
It, it's based on demand, so it's who builds what, where.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this, maybe, maybe we can have an update on the, on the plan later?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think at some point we gotta go forward and get that council briefing again. I understand there's other projects as well, I'm not gonna bring it up today, but there's other projects that was canceled that's, you know, ready to go and I think that's a little concerning, knowing that this council has no jurisdiction over the Department of Water, but I think those questions need to be asked. So, yeah, we'll set something up, thank you.
So, there are two plans that the Water Department is responsible for, right? One is the water twenty twenty plan, which is gonna turn into a wa- water twenty thirty-five or twenty forty plan, that you're a long-range facilities plan, is it not? And, and so, actually, the timing is probably good because we're doing the general plan and your facilities plan is supposed to be in accordance with the general plan. And so the decisions we make about the design and shape of growth are gonna affect the design and shape and cost of your facilities plan. If we do a spread out growth, it's gonna be expensive plan, if it's more compact, it's gonna be a cheaper plan. And then there's another plan you're working on, which is called the-
Water use and development.
The water use and development plan, and what is that about?
Basically, if you look at the land use and the zoning, it takes the gross areas and determines what their water use is based on, uh, you know-
Existing zoning or land use.
Yeah, existing, well, and our standard, say, gallons per acre, you know, allocation. And what that does is it compares it to what information we know of in terms of how much water we have. In other words, sustainable water, sustainable yield.
So it's looking for-
So it's comparing-
A capacity, uh, you're, what, what the sustainable capacity is?
Yeah, it's comparing, if we totally build out all areas, ag, commercial, residential, how does that compare if we allocate water to it, to our water resources? Hopefully, what happens is the water resources is above the demand of the development. If it's the other way around, then, you know, we have to make modifications one way-
Then you're in trouble.
Um, no, then we can't develop everything. It's, it's, there's no trouble because what we're gonna do-
But what if-
We're not gonna allocate water more than what we have.
That's true.
Okay.
So, so if all the wealthy development gets in first, then there won't be water left for the affordable housing?
That's kind of a policy question, but, yeah, we do it first come, first served.
First come, first served. So, you're familiar with this land use build-out analysis that was done for the general plan?
Um, I didn't go through that, but yeah, I'm-
I mean, maybe it'll help you do your water use and development plan? So what is your timetable for your water use and development plan?
Well, right now, what we, where we're at is we drafted a section of the water use and development plan for one of the water systems that we're looking at and SeaWorm is reviewing that and once that's done, then we're gonna, uh-
So SeaWorm, which is the Commission on Water-
Resource Management.
Resource Management, that's a state agency which is, I guess, guiding, like good state agencies should, the local government process of doing a water use development plan, right?
Yeah.
They're, they're kind of overseeing it?
And there's a whole set of, there's like the state water use plan, the ag water use plan, and all of these come together to form the water use and development plan. You know, DOH does their water quality plan and, so there's like about half a dozen different reports that all got a-
It's a comprehensive water plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's-
So-
It's more like a comparison of development to sustainable water.
Yeah, it looks like it's looking at a capacity, our capacity with respect to water.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not keeping surface water and potable water separate, it's looking at it all together.
Well, surface water can be potable water.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is probably why they're putting it all together.
So what, what they're looking at right now is everything is being based on the sustainable yield for the groundwater.
Okay, so the principle is sustainable yield?
Yeah.
And Councilmember, uh, Boone has a follow-up as well?
Sure.
On the, like you said, first come, first served, and she was asking about the big developers building, so how long average does it take for you guys to approve if you guys go and give water to a developer?
All depends on how big the development, um-
Speak louder.
All depends on how big, how large the development is, but not sure what you mean by approve?
Here?
Say, it takes a while, because say, you're a developer and you have a hundred acres you wanna build houses on, and you come into the Water Department, well, hopefully you come in to talk to us and go, what do I need to do? We'll ask you probably to do a water master plan, which-
So, I guess my question I'm trying to get at is, is if a big developer come in, affordable housing come in a month later, we're gonna make sure this developer get all what he wants first before we work on the affordable. That, that, that's my thing, I mean, I hope we will, you know, because it was just said, first come, first served, but, I mean, will we do everything in our power to help this affordable housing, which can help locals here on island?
Well-
Instead of one developer, they're gonna sell million dollar homes that they don't even live here anyway.
Okay, you can, I just, I mean, back there, you know, but, no, sorry about that. But, no, the bottom line for us, like, when Ni'maula was being planned, we got involved early on. If we get involved early on, we can help defer some of the costs.
Okay.
Okay, like, we are a lot, doing the improvements so phase one can be built. It also allowed us to go to the legislature and get money to do those improvements, so now that our customers aren't impacted. But say if it just falls on us and say we wanna build next month?
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, so you guys willing to work with that?
Oh, yeah.
You know, because I mean, as far as us, we, we got no say over the Water Department, so, you know, rest of the counties, we can-
You got some power over us.
I mean, you know, you guys, you guys own separate entities, so, you know, I just hope we will look as hard as we can on affordable housing and-
Yeah.
Try to help the local housing first.
Bottom line, we have to be fair though.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I said legally.
Yeah.
Monica has yours now.
I got a follow-up real quick, maybe this for Monica, but is there a way, is there a, how can we, can we give preference to affordable housing projects as it relates to infrastructure or water? And again, if you're not prepared, you know, this is all on the fly, so I can, I can respect if you need more time, but it just seems to me, I think, that, that the county would have some legislative authority to, to restrict or to allocate somehow, because regardless if the county, uh, Water Department is semi-autonomous, they've still gotta follow the county code. Is there a legislative option for us to secure source, a water source for affordable?
For the Rec. Monica Trask County Attorney, you know, when you say, like, affordable housing, would that also, just to kind of understand the question, would that include things like, like homeless facilities and other programs to address homelessness? Could that, would that, is that part of it?
I mean, I don't think the, the type of housing matters, I think it's more on the authority of the council, legislative authority, can we, can we allocate, can we state in a, in a ordinance that certain water resources be held for affordable? And when I say affordable, I'm not talking about a hundred forty percent and below, I'm talking about eighty percent and below.
Yeah, well, the only reason why I say this is because, like, we're kind of piggybacking on the discussion earlier when we were talking about housing and homelessness, and the reason why, to orient myself, is that the prime authority in the state for that is the State Department of Human Services, but I'm not gonna get into that. What the specific authority is the county does have under HRS forty-six one point five twenty-five, any county mayor by executive order, may exempt donors, provider agencies, homeless facilities and other programs for homelessness, from real property taxes, water and sewer development fees, rates collected for water supply to consumers, for sewers and anything else. We do play an important secondary role, it would just depend upon what we're talking about affordable housing, you're right, I don't think that may, or it may not, but include a hundred forty percent plus, but definitely lower end type stuff-
Yeah.
We definitely can address in some way, shape or form, that is our, you know, part of our power.
But as it relates to the Water Department, because of their semi-autonomy, is that, I mean, we could dictate, I guess that's the question, can we, can we say, rather than first come, first served, can we, can we introduce or pass a bill that would, would restrict a percentage of the water source to affordable housing projects of, let's say eighty percent and below? Because that's harsh, but you know what that does? That, that-
Water is, water is difficult, only in that no one's really guaranteed water in the state of Hoi, water is always conditioned. And so, it's, like was stated earlier, we're at a, at the general plan, you're at a certain perspective that it's broad and you can look at, and so these types of ideas-
Okay, let me ask you in a hypothetical.
Okay.
There's eight hundred million gallons of water available, right? Based on the two point two used and three cap. Could there, could this council pass an order saying of that, eight hundred ga- a thousand gallons, you know, forty percent would, will be reserved for affordable housing projects?
I don't-
That's the question.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Only because it would depend on where the source is from, how it's allocated, if it restricts stream flow, you'd have to get SeaWorm involved, has, you know, all this type of stuff.
No, 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 but we already know the source, we have eight hundred thousand gallons available right now, that's not being used.
In the tank.
In the tank, I guess, wherever they're keeping it, I don't know. I'm assuming it's in some tank, I don't know.
What, for the surface water plant? It's in the reservoir?
But wherever, I mean, I'm just saying that-
In your big-
Okay, like, I'm using his, his scenario, big developer comes up, says, I like, go on project, I need X amount of water, and you get affordable housing developer coming up saying, I need X amount of water, and let's say we had a, there was an ordinance restricting the percentage of the available water to affordable housing project. So, big developer needs six hundred thousand gallons, affordable housing developer needs six hundred thousand gallons, you only got eight hundred thousand gallons. So in other words, if we restrict, if we say you gotta reserve a percentage of that source for affordable housing, is that discriminating? That's the real question.
Yeah, I, you know, I can't answer that right now, I mean, based upon that hypothetical, it's like that point in the movie where the guy's trying to figure out the math problem, it's just a bunch of letters in front of his brain, that's where I'm at right now. So I don't know. Because then you're looking at, I mean, is it a distribution source? If it's a reservoir, that, that could be, you know, the district, water is not owned, but the distribution system is owned. So then if you're taking that away, does that constitute a taking? Is that a property interest? You'd have to look at all these things. So in your, at this point, I can't answer, I'd have to go research.
But you said, you know, the water is not guaranteed.
That's true.
Right, so if we say, hey, forty percent of whatever is available is gonna go to affordable housing and the, and the developer needs more, and it's not, is it constitutional for us to say, sorry, because you can have this much, but that's all, the rest we gotta reserve for affordable housing?
It would depend.
What we do now, our systems, we have X amount of capacity and what we got in the ground now, if a developer comes in and wants more than what we have in our system, they go and build it and then convey it to us.
They build a system?
Yeah. Um, Kukuiula did wells, tanks, transmission lines, they built a whole water system and conveyed it.
Now, if a developer comes up and says, hey, we have a project, we're gonna need X amount of water, but the build out is not for five years, are they assured that water for five years, no one else can have that source?
No.
It's not, it, so if, if they come up and-
So if all these single family homes show up one at a time?
They'll have access to the water.
Yeah.
And that's come up in, in relation to wastewater systems in the Waileua corridor. We had tried to say in the past that you, you couldn't use capacity that had been reserved for other developments, and the court said, no, you can't do that, the capacity is there, it's available now. When those other ones get serious, then you may wanna have to get more capacity, but you can't really reserve.
Cannot reserve, okay, thank you.
So, I mean, allocation's kind of a hard thing to tackle, but, I mean, the port of water has, supply has this, has this body as well that creates these rules, they have the, they can do the reserve charges and all that. I guess the question that, that we're trying to find out is that, can the council in any way oversee that, is that through the charter, or is that through an ordinance that might oversee some of these, some of these things that we're looking at from a broader picture?
Yeah, well, I, you know, the water- Yeah, well, I, you know, the, the water, the Board of Water and the Department of Water operate the water works of the county. So that's it. Um, it is a semi-autonomous unit, and they are not sublet, subject to political control of the mayor's office or the county council. And that's how the charter was framed. To change that would have to, you'd have to change the charter. But, like, uh, the, the water manager said. Um, they work with the, everything is part of the water development plan, or the water plant is part of the general, not a part of the general plan, but they, it informs each other. And they work together, so these differences, they don't necessarily, it's, it's not necessarily true or accurate or beneficial look at. How are we separate, but it's more how can we work together with some, cause there's arguments to keep it semi-autonomous, because you don't want that pressure on the water department. That's what Tony Kuymer said back in the day.
And, and we already have, uh, affordable housing discounts on, uh.
Yeah, and just to give you a, you know, it's gonna be several million dollars that Limaola gets discounted at build out.
How much is reserved for, for in discount?
What's that?
Per budget, how much is reserved in discount for affordable housing?
Right now, nothing, until we know what, um, it's gonna look like, so basically what happened.
Somebody's gotta be on the board before you guys budget it, is what you're saying. Like, there's gotta be an affordable project that you, that you need to identify before you folks start to budget a discount.
Well, what, what it does is, in our budget, say if we know we're gonna lose. Two million dollars with the subsidies, then we'll take a two million dollar project that, you know. And defer it to next year or something.
I see, thank you.
So how much are you, um, how, how much are the improvements you're giving to Limaola?
Uh, I believe it's gonna be in several million dollars worth of.
Can you provide me with a figure? Okay, and.
I think we brought that once, the last time we came here.
Oh, okay.
Um, when we were talking about the FRCs and we had all those tables, and I know it was more tables than.
You overwhelmed us.
I'm an engineer.
With information.
I'm an engineer, I like tables.
Steph, if we can go find that, and then, so, when you do that, you're taking from your budget. For your water twenty twenty plan, so you're saying you have to.
Yeah.
Defer projects then?
Basically, we have two methods of rev, two revenue streams. Our FRC, connection, you know, the impact fees.
Facilities reserve charge, which, when a house is built, it's not just the water system for the house, but it's all going back to the source and everything.
Your share of the well, yeah.
Your share of the system cost, okay?
And then your water rates, so every time you use water, you pay us, you know, uh, that rate, and that's our two sources of funding.
Water rates basically pay your operational costs, so the FRC pays your expansion or your, your system cost?
Yes and no, FRCs can only be used for expansion, but water rates can also subsidize that. Um, which is why when you look at Honolulu, their FRC is very low, they've just never changed it. It's just that the water rate subsidizes.
Their policy is that their current rate payers pay for.
Yeah.
Their system costs, not for the future users.
Versus, you know, the new users pay for their share.
Okay, so, so in your case, when you give two million or three million to Limaola, then.
We just don't have that revenue, so, um, we need to cut back.
On your overall project capital?
And it's FRC, so it's.
It's a capital expansion?
An expansion project.
Okay, so.
So it's kind of a double-edged sword, you know, um, but we're trying to balance it and.
But, but you, it's also for future affordable housing projects, you can't keep doing that. Without not have, I mean, and, and implement your overall plan for the future either. I mean, can you make that a policy and, and say, every affordable housing project, we're going to provide all the water facility? The capital that's needed for, for the water facilities? That would be one way of subsidizing affordable housing.
That would be one way, I mean, we could change our rules of the water department.
Okay.
The rules and regulations.
All right, so then what about this idea, you said when a big developer comes in and says. We want, we need water, you say, okay, the system has this much, but you're asking for more than we have, so you pay for the balance. But if you just tell them they pay for everything, they don't get anything from your existing system, and they just pay for everything they need?
Again, we're getting into the, um, if we have water, we have to provide that water. So say we have a system that's just built, and only ten percent is used. Okay, and a developer comes in and wants to build, what you're saying is, oh. Go build a brand new system and leave this ninety percent alone.
Exactly.
The problem with that is, again, operationally, like we talked about the last time, having a system that's not being used. Becomes a water quality nightmare for us. We like the water moving around and not staying in the system. For long periods of time.
That's why planning's so important, because you want to have the sys, the water system come on board. About the same time that your houses are coming on board, so you don't have those big, you don't, you don't have those big downtimes.
You run into problems like Kulana, you know, where we have a water system and it's hasn't been. Used, so.
But, right.
A lot of times, we're, we're reactionary, people plan, they are committed, and then.
But they take, they, we're, we're taking the risk for them somehow, we're not putting the risk on them.
No, we are, cause that's why we're gonna ask the developer to develop the water system if there's not enough capacity.
Uh, it comes down to, it's like a, it's a legal analysis under exactions, that's pretty much what it comes down to. So an exact, if there's a development, you can require them, if there's a, like, if they need water, then there's a nexus. So they have to develop water, and then what you can require out of them has to be roughly proportional to the impact of that development. Upon the water, so the, the problem you run into is if there is a, a bunch of water. And you're saying we want you to develop a new water system, we, we have gotten sued before saying, well, there is water. Although there will be a nexus of the impact, we'll need water, there's a ton of water, and the fact that you're having us. Pay for a future development when it is available, there's just constitutional problems with that.
But, why don't you say, uh, you're taking this future capacity from us? So, we'll give you the water now, but you pay us to build the next water that we need for the affordable housing projects?
It, it's not a question of whether or not the county attorney's office or the water department is not seeing anything, it is what the US Supreme Court says. And trying to fit into that analysis, and I'm not, it, your hypothetical requires more specifics. But generally, in answer to your questions, that's generally the answer.
Okay, so.
Those are the issues.
Let me pose the question in another way, we have three thousand seven hundred plus hotel rooms, resort rooms. That are already zoned for, do we have enough water to support that?
Where is the?
They're all over.
Well, if, if they haven't come in to us, we don't know about them. Okay, and we probably wouldn't have water for them.
You don't have water for them?
Well, I don't, I don't know, it depends where they're at in our system, it depends. You know, if they have come in to talk to us about their water needs, um, then we'd be evaluated what. But, if it's just zoned or, um. Then we.
Okay, and, okay, so it's just zoned, and then the economy starts revving up, and then they come in for the water. And they use whatever capacity we have, then we have an affordable housing project come in. And then the affordable housing project either cannot go forward, or they have to pay for the, the water, which makes it unaffordable.
Yes.
That's how it happens?
Yes.
Something's wrong with that picture.
It's a complex question.
Well, why couldn't, why couldn't you say, as soon as, as a condition of getting zoning, people have to pay for their water? Then they will, you don't need to use it or lose it, they either have to be really ready when, when they come in for their zoning. Or else they, they, they lose that money because they dally for whatever reasons, and they don't build in time. So you're accumulating, and, and I don't see that the courts would have any problem with that, because that's just making them pay for their costs.
We're doing a form of that right now, because we have people who have come in twenty years ago. And purchased a meter, but never installed it.
Okay.
So they have this capacity in the system that's never being used. There, we're maintaining the system without them paying anything into it, so what we've done is we put. A deadline on when, um. After three years, if you purchase a meter and don't install it and activate it, we will. Take the meter and return your money, because what we don't want is people banking water.
So, so we could do that with zoning, we could say, um, you, you come in for zoning. If you don't build in three years, we take it back, um, and, um. You pay us for those three years while we're holding your water capacity. Could we?
I would rather stay with the meters, not zoning.
Well, yes, that's cause you're, you're, you only have to worry about water, but we're worrying about unused zoning. Yeah, unused zoning capacity that lingers on and gets to be overzoning if you, if it. You, you know, if, in the meantime, other people come in and ask for zoning, and, and it just keeps accumulating like we have today. Okay.
So like, the question is directed, yeah, to the water, uh, any more questions for water? I, I have one. Um, there was some testimony about, um, page one thirty-seven. Uh, A three, encourage alternatives for non-potable water usage such as rainwater catchment and gray water recycling. I know that there's been, I know that when you, if the groundwater's there, then you have to, you have to use that, uh, as opposed to. It's one or the other, and you have to use what's available, right? So, um, I mean, this, this, this kinda moves us in a direction of us possibly having. Uh, access or availability to use both, is that, how do we do that? How, how is that achievable?
Well, the, we started thinking about that, um, more and more recently. And, um, when you talk about catchment, it depends what, how people define that. You got the people who define catchment as just rain barrels, you know, so they can scoop out water and water their audit plants. Uh, you got like Big Island catchment, um, the, uh. The issue we have right now is cross-contamination, so what we would probably do. Or what we're thinking about right now is, um, do we want it two separate systems? Uh, with a backflow preventer, or just one system with a backflow preventer? Um, uh, at the property line, if, right after the meter, um, that's a possibility. Um, once you start talking about water reuse, uh, gray water and all that. Now you start getting into the health issues, cause, um. You know, gray water is actually everything except what goes down your sink and toilet. Um, um, so that can be a nuisance, um, you know.
Is, is this, so, are the gray water and the catchment, that's all under your purview, not the state health department and any?
Uh, it's not under our purview.
Oh, it's, okay.
Yeah.
Department of Health.
So, so there's some, some, you folks are working on it, cause I, I hear you say, Kurt, I, I, you said, oh, what about?
No, we're considering like, because more and more we get people coming in, talking about catchments or having a private well. But wanting backup, um, from our system, um, the, there's, just to be honest. There's two things, the biggest item is the cross-contamination, we don't know how they're taking care of their water system. Uh, the other is. You know, um, whether or not, um, they're actually using their system versus ours, our water system.
So, so, I, let me correct myself, so the gray water system actually has been. The regulation of gray water systems is been handed to the counties. So, if you have a gray water system you wanna implement in your home, you come to the county, um, plumbing. Uh, in building division, in the plumbing section, but we haven't adopted the new plumbing code yet. So we cannot really implement it.
So the plumbing code is holding this back?
Uh, the, yes, part of it, yes, so, so, but the gray water can only be used for irrigation. Ground, groundwater irrigation.
Right.
And, and, um, the person who comes in, you know, we have some. Even though the State Department of Health created the policy, it's been handed to the counties to implement and regulate.
Yeah, sir. Thanks, thank you. Um, how is work in a big island? How does a big island operate their catchment system? They, they use theirs for potable, right?
Yeah.
How, how do, how does it, how do they do theirs?
If they have a dual system, they have a backflow preventer.
Okay, and do all of them have a dual system, or?
No.
Okay.
So, um, the other thing, and it's either the county water or private truckers. Say, you don't have enough water in your tank, they truck water to you.
So what prevents us from allowing that to happen today, for our, somebody wants to build a home in an area that has sufficient rainfall? Are they allowed to do that? Or do we have a, anything prohibiting them from that?
They can do a catchment system, but they cannot be tied to our water system right now. Or they can be tied to our water system, but not have a catchment system.
Right.
Um, we allow, like, say, for egg lots, they'll have irrigation wells. Solely dedicated, in other words, a whole separate water system, but their house is connected to, you know, our system.
Okay, so I heard you say you're exploring it, and I'm assuming, uh, because it's in the general plan, that you guys, I, were participating in this discussion.
Yes.
What would it take to allow landowners or homeowners to, to utilize a dual system? I heard you say backflow preventer, but what, what would allow that? Is it an ordinance, is it your rules, or what?
It's just probably, it's our rules.
So that would be in your, your.
Yeah.
Purview, is that something, I know I heard you say you're looking into, but is that something that you're considering?
Yes.
Yes, so, uh, so that's the catchment system that's on its way to some. Some, um, regulation that will enable it on Kauai?
Well, what.
Right now, it's enabled this.
It'll probably be simpler than that.
Uh-huh.
And it'll just be addressing dual water systems and dual potable water systems.
So you're gonna allow catchment, but it just won't be allowed to connect?
Thinking about it, we're thinking about.
Yeah, so you're, but what you're thinking about is likely to be two separate systems, that's what you're calling?
We don't know yet, whether it's two separate systems or one system and a backflow.
Okay, so, so right now, it's not allowed, but you're moving toward allowing some form of a catchment system? Okay, now, with respect to gray water, I thought gray water by definition does not include sewage water?
No, that's what I said, anything that goes down your toilets or sinks.
Is not, is not gray water?
It's, yeah, it's basically your laundry water and, you know.
Yeah, so laundry water, and there's no regulations, Lyle, there's not, no regulations in the plumbing code right now to allow it?
I, I, we don't have.
I think, I think we do. Um, so that's really good news? Because if people can use that water to water their lawns, they don't have to use potable water, which is like using a Cadillac to go to the store, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of headaches associated with gray water.
Like what?
Um, just the lint that's involved. You know, all the lint that you get off your dryer? That's also in your water that goes out to, um, in the gray water.
And is that a public health issue?
It's a, it's a system issue. Um, it clogs pipes, it's, um, it just makes the gray water system a maintenance.
Well, so hopefully the regulation, the plumbing regulations will allow for some kind of sieve or filter or something.
They, they need to have, so a licensed professional will have to design the system, which will have to meet certain criteria of being able to settle solids out of the water.
Yes.
Essentially, they need a treatment.
So the point I'm moving to though, is this seven hundred fifty gallons per day for, that you allocate for single-family homes. If, if you can reduce the seven hundred fifty gallons per day, you could have more water for more homes.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So, um, you know, so that goes to, you know, low-flush toilets, uh, what do you call it? Waterless urinals, um, th- those kinds of things that are now being incorporated into what they call lead-designed houses or more sustainable houses. And that then frees up more water for, for hotels and affordable housing to compete for.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so do you have a plan to reduce the seven hundred fifty gallon, um, gallons per day figure?
We have a conservation plan, um, but what we've noticed over the last several years, maybe five years or so, um, is that consumption has been dropping. Um, so what we are, um.
That's good?
That's, that's good, because basically what, um, and I've, Eddie here is in, in charge of water resource and planning. So we're discussing the possibility if we, if we need to, um, lower our design standards.
Oh, very good. And, and are already your design standards require less water per multifamily unit? Or, or do you use the same standard for multifamily as you do single-family?
It's less, right?
Less.
Less.
It is less. What is it, so like for our, um, rice camp housing, what?
It's five twenty-five, five twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, so it's five twenty-five gallons per day? And if we were to incorporate other water efficiency requirements in our building code or plumbing code?
Well, and it wouldn't be just what's in the code. We have to actually see a drop in our consumption. And once we have comfort that that's, it's gonna remain low, um, we will seriously consider lowering the design standard.
Now, um, there was a question about dual systems for reuse of water, and I think even Gulf Farms looking into that. I think Waimea is doing that with our sewage treatment.
Mm-hmm.
Affluent, cause it's gonna be now R1 quality.
Mm-hmm.
And Lihui too?
So, so I can answer that. So we presently have, um, upgraded the Lihui wastewater treatment plant and Waimea. We still in the process of getting Waimea to qualify for sustainable R1 quality.
And when that happens, then, because some neighborhoods can actually be built with dual systems so that?
So that would be, we would have to then install like water, storage system and a distribution system to the users. And, and the system piping that you would see would be the purple pipes. So the reuse water out in various communities is the purple pipes.
And they would use for lawn irrigation?
We have some private, and we do have for our county with water that we send to Waillua, Gulf Farms is in purple pipes. Um, and what we use in our own facilities, recycling water are the purple pipes so that the employees know the distinction between portable and non-portable.
Okay, yeah.
Is there a follow-up also here for council chair?
Well, it's not a follow-up.
So we, so we have the potential for, we have it at Wa- We have R1 at Lihui, we have R2 at Waillua. And we still, R2 in Waimea, and we're working towards R1.
Okay, I mean, so, I'm, for the main, I mean, for planning purposes, what we're envisioning in the long run are dual-system neighborhoods that would, can reduce this seven hundred fifty gallons per day probably substantially because people now can use, um, the-
Well, that's per household. So the house itself has to reduce that water.
Right, but I'm talking about neighborhoods where each house has a dual system.
If they irrigate with the R1 water, then, yes.
Right, so that would lower the standards, or could lower the standards for those neighborhoods and make potable water?
And, and they need to be separate distinct systems.
Yes, okay.
I mean, as the water department, when we look at, um, what process, I guess, or what, um, yeah, process gives us the most bang for our buck in terms of, uh, water conservation, it's if Public Works does reclaim water. Um, because it's about gallon-for-gallon savings versus rain barrels and all that. Um, yes, they do help, but it's-
It's real recycling because it comes as potable water and then it gets circulated to sewage, which then goes to reusable.
And groundwater recharge.
And groundwater recharge. Okay, thank you.
Your question, council chair? Um, I just have, I gotta ask this question, and we don't get you guys here often, so I would take advantage of you guys being here. As it relates to like DHHL. What is the relationship between a county and, and entities like DHHL, Hawaiian Homes?
Short of just saying good.
Like everybody else, or do they, they, do they have a preference?
Free water for Hawaiians?
I mean, we're working with them up in Anahola now. Um, cause they developing new housing tract, right? Um, and they haven't decided whether they're going convey the, and really they don't convey their facilities to us. Um, we can do a different kind of agreement than we operate and bill, um, their homeowners. But we work with them, um, the-
In, in particular, the Waillua, I know they had some problems with water in Waillua and, and where they wanna build out in Waillua.
Um, I don't know. I, I know they had comments to, um, an EA that was for the eighteen-inch Kane Hall Road, where they were concerned about water for the development. Um, again, if they haven't come in to talk to us, um, you know, we-
I, I guess the, what I heard was that they had requested water and they were told that we didn't have enough water for that project, uh, in Waillua.
Yeah.
And that they were forced to, uh, build their own wells and, I, I mean, I'm seeing today we do have water. So I'm just curious, as far as the relationship between DHHL and the county as it relates to water, do they have a preference? Are they, uh, entitled to water? And maybe Mason can answer this, I'm not sure. But as, as far as you know, there was never a request made for water for Waillua?
So, um, DHHL, the one, um, on the Lihui side of Waillua River?
Yeah.
So there was, uh, they came in and it's basically they're not in our, um, service area. So they was required to do the soft storage transmission. They was required to do the soft storage and transmission.
And why would, we have water though, right?
Why would we?
No, we have water.
Yeah.
Available.
Yes.
They have?
Yeah.
Land and they can build the homes, why would we not provide them the water?
The misconception I think you're having with the two point two, um, and the three million gallons is that right now we have the luxury of sending water towards Waillua and Kapaa. The long term, that is just the emergency connection. The treatment plant will, from Honolulu to Puhi, will essentially just serve the Lihui area. Um, so.
Well, I, I guess, I'm getting confused. I don't know if it's a misconception, but I'm getting confused, cause I heard you say it's first come, first served.
Yeah.
And I heard you say we get eight hundred million gallons per day available.
Yes.
And we have Hawaiian homelands who are asking for water to build the, to build Hawaiians' homes.
Yes.
And you're saying that we, we, we wouldn't give them the money? I mean, the, the, not the money, but the, the water? And that they would have to provide their own source, transmission and storage?
Well, it's kinda like, um, say the Lawai Kalahail area. We can move water from Lawai to Kalahail. We don't on a daily basis. On the ti- when we lost the two wells in Kalahail, we were able to at least bring some water to Kalahail. So operationally, we don't do that every day.
But you do going through Waillua?
For now. That's not the, um, ultimate plan. The plan is the treatment plant is for the Lihui area.
And then Waillua, what, what's gonna happen in Waillua? Like my water, I live in Haasas, my water come from Lihui.
Yeah.
Surface. We have wells up in Waillua that we're not using, right?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out, why, why would we not have provided? If we have an opportunity for Hawaiian Homes to put up some houses, why would we not provide them the water?
I need to talk to Eddie more on that.
Okay, well, I guess, um-
I just, that's a very, I, I don't know, is it just no?
It goes back to, um, I guess, system planning where, um, you start off with on system and you design things to accommodate your service area. And if somebody comes and wants, wants to build another s- same amount of development, that would leave our system with no water for people that the system was designed for.
If it's outside of that system.
Yeah, so it, we-
Waillua is not in the service area, right?
Waillua is-
Of the, of the service water treatment plant?
If Waillua is in a-
And Kapaa? It's not a trick question, it's very, I mean, I'm-
Okay, it, it's, it's a service area.
It is a service area. For, for the service water treatment plant?
Hmm.
I mean, the surface water, I, I don't understand, maybe I don't understand what ser- service area is. What, what do you mean by service area?
I guess service area is one area where, um, it's, um-
Please gotta turn off your phones, please.
Zone for development and that we, uh, take care of.
Okay. So, we have an opportunity to provide homes for Hawaiians and we, all we needed to do was provide them water. And I, I guess that's where, it's kinda surprised to hear of the, and I should've known that, but I don't, uh, about the, the water that we have available that, uh, that we would be able to provide. So is that just a, is that a policy issue?
It's, it's how we do, it's a, I guess, policy. Because like Kukulua, they came in, they next to Koloa, they next to Poipu, but they was building out a big service area and they was required to, not building out a big service area, they was doing development that was not-
Outside the area.
Outside of our planned service area.
Right, right.
So we, when the general plan comes out, we gonna look at what is the, maybe the service area gonna expand, maybe not, but we still gotta deal with the issue of getting water or infrastructure.
And we recently changed or modified that policy to say if somebody does build outside of, say the, cause the service areas are based on the general plan, the existing general plan. So if you're outside, you're really outside. You're not counted in for what we're planning, uh, for service. So we've changed that policy where, um, say, um, like Limaola is really outside of the general plan area. Um, but we said if they're willing, we have water and they're willing to build the infrastructure to get the water from us to them, then we can sit down and start talking.
Is that the same discussion we had with Hawaiian Homes?
That time, the policy hadn't changed, so if you were outside, you're outside.
So if that discussion was to happen today, we would be able to?
We'd, it'd probably be a lot more positive potentially. Not knowing exactly where their, um, facilities are.
Well, we know where their land is, I mean, we know where the land is, right? You know, we talk about low-hanging fruit, I think this is one of them. That, you know, as I'm glad we're having this discussion today, because again, we don't usually have this opportunity. And as more and more we discuss things, more and more comes up and, uh, that is a low-hanging, hanging fruit, that, and, and we could, and that's them. Hawaiian Homes gonna build the homes.
Yeah.
Not the county. I don't even worry about Kanani and her creative financing. We just gotta give water that we have. So I would encourage that discussion to continue. Cause, uh, no, 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 clapping. But I'm just, you know, it is what it is. And, and I'm, we're, we're struggling to figure out where the next penny gonna come from. And we got an opportunity, we have the water and we're just not taking advantage, so. And Lima, we did it for Limaola, why not doing for Hawaiian Homes? I think we just need to move down that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and I know council member, you have a, which I just wanted to, yeah, I have a follow-up to just on, so is there, is there a need for, in, in, just in terms of this discussion here, is there a need to expand on service area on this current general plan?
What kind of service area?
So to ex, the co- the conversation is about expand, expansion of the service area in order to include potential growth. Um, and that's what guides you folks, right, in the general plan? So is there a need for that to occur in an amendment here for this general plan? Okay. Cause you've addressed that. On your side, okay, thank you. Council member, you can-
So if you do that, you won't have enough water for Lihui when that builds out?
Well, that's what I was trying to explain.
Right.
The treatment plant is really for the Lihui area.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear, that's the trade-off. So- Well, so, so, somebody's mic's not on. So Mayor Baptiste once suggested that we move, we work with Hawaiian Homes and move that density to Lihui. Um, and, and that would solve the problem without distorting our planning or depriving the Lihui area of water. If we move the development, and, and that development has a lot of problems because the drainage, the flooding, the traffic, all of that. If it could be moved closer to Lihui, um, then, say even in the Kohe Aloa, then, um, you would just get a lot more compact, uh, development. It would, it would meet our compact, um, development criteria. So that's another way to address that problem, is it not?
We actually researched the, the ability for us to do land swaps with, um, homelands to facilitate the type of situation you're talking about. And what we've been advised, um, by council from Department of Hawaiian Homelands is that it would actually take an act of Congress to actually do so. So, um, you know, that, that type of facilitation, unless the land is given gratis to Department of Hawaiian Homelands, they cannot remove lands out of their corpus that has been bestowed upon them through the act of Congress. So.
That's what I was thinking of.
One more follow-up here. So to address the concern about taking water away from Lihui, we, we have source in Waillua that could service Waillua, correct? I, I don't know who to ask, but we have, like, like Waillua Haasas, we were serviced by wells. We have that.
We're, we're approaching capacities in some areas. So it, like I was saying, it depends where and what our facilities capabilities are, what they wanna develop, um.
I guess what I'm saying is if we use the Lihui source for the Lihui, Waillua and use the available sources in Waillua and Kapaa to address, right now you get Lihui water going to Kapaa?
Mm-hmm.
Is there no other source in Kapaa?
No, there's other sources. No, there is other sources.
So if we use the Kapaa source for Kapaa, the Waialua source for Waialua, all that water, this is to actually answer Joanne's question. It's for Lihui. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just need to come in, I guess. I mean.
We should be reaching out too, I mean, we are the ones in the crisis, you know what I'm saying? We should be, and I'm not talking about you specifically and water department, but all of us together, we should be, I mean, I just, you know, it's just only now I I I'm thinking about these things, but. That's the kinds of fruit we gotta go pick.